How are you? And it's not one person.
Nice. Unfortunately, it's a little stuck. But we also tried a bunch of them. Okay, cool. Yeah, well, it will certainly be be before us at some point, that's for sure. We can count on that, at least. Wax paper in my mouth, too.
Biocles, I usually have. Where's that sound guy? Everybody ready? Really? This one says 6:30. What are you? Oh, really? That's weird. Is Felicia coming? Maybe Nick knows. I said maybe Nick knows.
It's not 6:30 yet, Joy.
It is 6:30. Oh, this is 6:29. Yes. I got it. Yeah, I got it. I got it right here. And. Yeah. How about now? 6:30. Okay. I'm going to open the Planning Commission meeting for November 26, 2024. Roll call, please.
Chair.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
Hey, would you like to tell us what's going on in your world?
Yeah, so that announcement. So few things currently reviewing a land reparation as one of the live experience. It is a proposal to buy a single lot into two modules. It is found residential meeting that three points. I guess that was currently in review. I just want to hear a pre-annuation comments for 6:15 town. That one is 1.138 zone residential high density. And that is a rebuild of a multifamily residential complex. The previous complex, they exist three long way higher to this 10 minutes. They will be built 16. The equipment that we had proposed will be more or less a somewhat before this. Those were some reviews that I've currently doing while out. On top of that, just wanted to let you guys know why we're all here. December 10, hoping to get a piece of study session. That's with DLCV, the Southwest DLCV Josh Bellmar. And that is a mass timber work session. And as we also do with consultant named Brandon Crawford. The mass core. The basically go over the co-reliance through the state of Oregon. Help facilitate the construction of mass timber and other proved out. And that's if you're ever wondering how mass timber is, it's basically for a state of Oregon, it's combining the use of engineered wood products. Hence mass timber with the benefit of offsite modular or pretty bad fabricated construction. So just quicker build houses. And then the recommended updates sort of by the Oregon. You can back to model or how the model code and audit work. So I just want to.
So what? What would be the date in December of our regular meeting?
Well, that was my other thing. So our regular meeting, if I remember right, without even having the calendar, I think it would be 24.
Christmas Eve.
So, okay, so that that will. I don't know if we can make that a regular meeting instead of ours. Or. I'm looking. We could Commissioner Volkart, could we change a meeting to a regular meeting?
It could be a special meeting.
Okay. So we would notice this notice it as a special meeting. And then we could have, you know, public heard and stuff along with that, too. Since we will.
Yeah, maybe just check availability for that day. With the.
Okay.
Are you commissioners available for that?
December 10.
What day is that, Lana?
The Tuesday. Two weeks from tonight.
In lieu of Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
I'll be out of town. You will be out of town on the 10th. The 24th. I'll be on the 10th.
Okay. Well, yeah.
Okay, looks good. Looks good. And that's just us, not council.
Yeah, just just one.
Because they had so much fun with us last time. I'm surprised they won't come back.
And that that was the one that we were originally supposed to do way back in like September.
Yeah.
But we haven't. But not so we had to push it back. So Josh was being really generous with us trying to get that. He had another deal. His contract is a member. And so Josh that one we decided to take over the world for that. So.
Good.
We didn't expect nothing less from Josh.
What'd you say?
I said, we didn't expect nothing less from Josh.
Absolutely.
Generosity.
He's he's a talented. Okay. I I lost my pen and I can't think without one. Thank you. Oh, really? Okay. So. We have some minutes to approve. Should be pretty straightforward. Do we have? Has everyone read the minutes?
Oh, yeah.
For a couple of minutes, we don't have to have been there, right? Since. Since the minutes are about us not being there. Okay. So. Anyone can move approval of minutes?
I moved to approve the minutes of July 23, 2024.
A second.
We have a second. Did you get that? And. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye. Any opposed? We have public comment on non-agenda items. Are there any? People here that want to speak to us about anything? No? You sure? Okay. Great. Moving right along to public comment. Oh, we just did the public hearing. Okay, this is a legislative public hearing. And I'm going to read.
You have to bring that up on something else.
So we just passed a public comment on non-agenda items was. Was that something you were here for? Did you want to talk to us about something? Non-agenda items. No, okay. Okay. So moving right along to the public hearing. The City of Talent Commission has the authority to hold legislative hearings in accordance with Oregon Public Meeting laws as described in ORS 192.610 through 192.710. Our decision on legislative issues is advisory to the city council who make the final decision to approve, modify, or deny. The city planner has determined that the approval criteria that apply to the following application or issue currently before the planning commission are as follows. Do you have a mic on? Just so everybody knows knows you. Could you say your name or maybe it's on your face?
There's a button on here. Okay, my name's Rowan Fairfield and I am a contract land use planner from RV cog. And so the applicable criteria for this legislative hearing is going to be talent municipal code, chapter 18, section 190, which is about procedures for review of applications and appeal, specifically the type four procedure. The talent comprehensive plan specifically elements A for citizen involvement, B for parks, recreation, open space, and urban forestry, C for natural hazards, E for economy, G for housing needs, and the urban growth boundary. Other applicable criteria included the Oregon land use planning goals. Some repeats there from the talent ones, but goal one, citizen involvement, goal two, land use planning, goal five, natural resources, scenic and historic areas and open spaces, goal six, air, water, and land resources quality, goal seven, areas subject to natural disasters and hazards, goal eight, recreational needs, goal nine, economic housing, and goal 10, or economic development, and goal 10 is housing. And lastly, ORS 197.610 and the OAR cited there that implements it. So we'll get into those into those a little bit. Later, first, I'm going to give you guys a more informal presentation because reading ordinances is very dry. And there's a lot of material in here. Unfortunately, we couldn't get my PowerPoint that I made specifically for talent to work. So we're going to go back to the RV cog one, which I gave as a multi-city study session. So this is about the National Flood Insurance Program and the Endangered Species Act. And.
Excuse me, Rowan, is this your staff report?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay, because we're supposed to do. Oh, that's. There's two kinds of hearings. Okay. That was just when you would tell us the criteria.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is my first hearing with talent, so.
That's okay. I think I'm doing this right.
Hang on. Okay, so pause on that.
Wow. So on the quasi judicial, the staff report would come later. Go ahead. They're good. I'm sorry.
Just going to go ahead with my presentation now. So. And I'm going to skip over some sections that aren't relevant to what we're talking about today. We're going to talk today about the pre-implementation compliance measures that FEMA is requiring all cities that participate in the National Flood Insurance Program to to start doing. And. Basically, I'm going to talk a little bit about the background first, and then I'll go over quickly the three pathways that FEMA offered to communities to comply with, and then talk about the new reporting requirements, which are going to be regardless of what pathway pathway you choose. And then some more information at the end. So skip over the meeting guidelines. No questions during this presentation. So background about the National Flood Insurance Program. Flooding is the single greatest source of damage from natural hazards in the United States. That might not be true for Oregon with our wildfires, but overall nationwide, that is the single greatest source of damage. And the National Flood Insurance Program was created as a public program in the 60s because of the rising costs associated with flooding and also realizing that some of the ways that we were building in a floodplain was making flooding worse over time. So. The National Flood Insurance Program is based on community participation. FEMA will provide flood insurance coverage and return the community, which is the City of Talent, has to adopt and enforce ordinances with certain minimum requirements. So you guys have been participating in the flood insurance program since 1974, when the first flood hazard boundary map came out. It was later upgraded to be called something called a flood insurance rate map in 1980. And then the most current map that you guys have adopted is from 2011. And now we're going to go all the way back to 1973 with the Endangered Species Act. So. Some of the objectives of the Endangered Species Act, section 7A1, to protect and conserve those endangered and threatened species in their habitats. Okay? And section 7A2, to ensure that any action that federal agencies authorize, fund, or carry out is unlikely to jeopardize the continued existence of those species or habitats or result in destruction or adverse modification of their habitats. So. Under these sections of the Endangered Species Act in 2009, FEMA was sued by a number of environmental groups in Oregon, including the Portland Audubon Society and like four or five others. And then in 2010, FEMA settled, so they decided not to go through with the lawsuit. They agreed to consult about the flood insurance program on these endangered species, which in Oregon specifically means salmon in this area. And. So in 2016, the National Marine Fisheries Service issued their biological opinion and the reasonable and prudent alternative. So they, the BIOP, as it's called for short, is basically the judgment or the conclusion that FEMA's implementation of the National Flood Insurance Program in Oregon would likely jeopardize the continued existence of those 16 salmon species and would result in the destruction of their habitat. So in other words, it does violate the Endangered Species Act. And then the RPA, which is the reasonable and prudent alternative, is the recommendations that they gave for how to reconcile the flood insurance program and the nature species act with the focus on new floodplain development and redevelopment. So that was all the way back in 2016. So here's the BIOP action area. Here's all of the places in Oregon that it's going to affect. It's more than, it's obviously most of the counties, most of the land area, most of the population fall under this action area. So it's had a pretty wide reaching effect already. More recently, in 2021, FEMA issued a draft implementation plan. And then in 2023, they began the NEPA process to focus on long-term, long-term measures. So these pre-implementation compliance measures are a short-term path that FEMA has put us on. And at the same time, they're still going through this long-term path to figure out what the end result is going to be for the implementation. So in September of last year, 2023, they got sued again by some different environmental advocacy groups who alleged that they were taking too long to implement their recommendations that they got. And so that is why we're here today, because in July 2024, FEMA announced these pickums are short-term measures in order to, I guess, settle that lawsuit or comply with that lawsuit. I'm not sure exactly what the chain was from A to B, but because they were sued, they released these pick them measures. And they gave us three choices with the deadline of December 1, which is right around the corner. Related to this, on August 1, FEMA temporarily suspended applications for letters of map revision and conditional conditional letters of map revision. So that's when you add a certain amount of fill to the floodplain, so you can elevate your home above the base flood elevation and have cheaper flood insurance. On September 26, the governor got involved. She sent a letter to the head of FEMA expressing concerns about these pickums and how difficult it would be to implement them with land use law and requesting an extension. And we got a response on November 14, where FEMA basically said, we understand this is very difficult, but December 1 is still the deadline. And on October 4, DLCD released an FAQ document to help assist. But they've been a little bit hands off with this process as well. So in the near future, like I said, FEMA gave participating communities a December 1 deadline to choose a pathway. And they said, if you don't choose a pathway, then they will default you into a permit by permit approach. And then FEMA is also requiring cities to start gathering additional data starting in January. And they have said that they want communities to fully implement their pick them choice by July, but they're still required to do another pick them in the meantime, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. And to also submit an annual part starting in January 2026. So on top of all this, there's requiring or reporting requirements that staff is going to have to do.
Sorry, what does it mean by permit by permit?
We'll talk about that more in just a second. So like I said, they're still going through this long-term National Environmental Protection Act process to do the environmental impact statements to have their final plan that they're going to fully implement. They want to have it in 2026. That deadline was originally, or that timeline was originally 2025, and they pushed it back. And they want to fully implement the plan by 2027, but they, until then, communities need to begin taking action to protect habitat and achieve no net loss. So what is no net loss? No net loss is a new standard that has been put into the proposed ordinance and the model floodplain code where adverse impacts to the floodplain need to be avoided, minimized, and or offset so that there's no net change in the existing floodplain function. So basically, anything that you do in the floodplain, you need to mitigate it to bring it back down to zero to whatever it was before. So you have no net loss at the end of the project. For all three pick them pathways, the objective is to ensure no net loss. So whatever pathway you choose, we're subject to these no net loss standards. And the floodplain functions that they identified in that biological opinion and that have carried through into this model code are floodplain storage, water quality, and riparian vegetation. So what floodplain storage means is when you have a base flood event, that water has to go somewhere and they want it to go where it has historically naturally gone. When you add too much fill, that increases the flow downstream and the velocity, and it can be more damaging. And because this is specifically about the Endangered Species Act, it has to do with fish being able to to get there and escape during a during a flood event. Water quality and riparian vegetation, that's a little more obvious, and we'll talk more about those. So real quickly, I'm going to talk about the other two pathways that they offered us, which we don't think are really viable, and they're not in the proposed ordinance. So the first one that they offered is prohibition on new development. That one's pretty simple, but probably the worst pathway we could choose. FEMA doesn't have the authority to prohibit development. That would be up to the city. And it could be accomplished with either a temporary moratorium or permanent rezoning. So not really a good, good way to accomplish that and would be pretty severe ramifications as we did. So skip over this part about moratorium. Pathway two is the new model code, which we're going to talk about in bulk today. So it's based on the 2020 model ordinance, and it has some new additions. If you go to the model ordinance that they released, the new additions are in yellow. And it gives us three proxies for those floodplain floodplain functions that we talked about before. Undeveloped space is a proxy for floodplain storage. Pervious surfaces, which is surfaces that water can penetrate. So not like asphalt or concrete, is a proxy for water quality. And then trees that are at least six inches in diameter is a proxy for riparian vegetation. So some of the changes in the new model code compared to the 2020 version. And the version that you guys have now is pretty close to the 2020 version, very similar formatting and language. It's got new language to address no net loss of undeveloped space, of pervious surfaces, and of trees as a proxy for those floodplain functions that we've been talking about. And it's got new language for activities that would require a floodplain permit, but are exempt from no net loss and are in something called the riparian buffer zone and subject to what they are calling the beneficial gain standard. So we'll talk about that, too. Hold on, I gotta read. Also in here are some changes to definitions, new definitions, minor edits for clarity and grammar. So this new model code, adopting this ordinance language from the model code would ensure compliance with the minimum standards of participation in the National Flood Insurance Program because these performance standards from the BIOP are built into the ordinance. However, a big asterisk on this is that DLCD has not yet determined whether the pickup model ordinance only has clear and objective standards. And that's a big thing for Oregon land use law, which I'm sure your city attorney can tell us more about. So we'll talk a little bit more about some of the some of the problems with this model code that they've provided in a little bit. So undeveloped space. Definition of this is the volume, that's a 3D space of flood capacity and fish accessible habitat from the existing ground to the base flood elevation that has no development, no development on it. So that includes fill, concrete, structures, tanks, pilings, pretty much anything you would normally consider development. So if you add developed space to the floodplain, you need to mitigate by creating undeveloped space between the existing ground and the BFV as determined by these mitigation ratios that they've provided. So FEMA has acknowledged that this would be the probably the hardest one to mitigate. And I went to the workshop and somebody asked, would that mean digging a hole? And the FEMA representative said, kind of yes. You would want to grade the landscape so that, again, fish could escape from that hole that you're digging. But yeah, you would need to either remove an existing structure that has equivalent volume or create that volume somehow. So that's the first one undeveloped space. The second one pervious surfaces. The definition is water surfaces that can be penetrated by water and help regulate the rate of surface water runoff. So when you've got too much asphalt and concrete increases the rate of surface water runoff, which increases erosion. It also is makes the temperature of the water hotter. So that's what they're trying to avoid. So mitigation includes three options. Again, you can replace it with the equivalent amount of impervious surface, create a pervious. So maybe you want to take out your driveway and put in some kind of permeable concrete pavers or gravel or something like that. That would be very doable. A little bit harder for something like a roof. They've talked about vegetated roofs, but I don't think that's going to be a very popular option. So the other options for mitigating this, the surface water runoff is to use low impact development or green infrastructure practices to treat that stormwater or elevate it even higher and require professional stormwater retention to ensure that there's no increase in peak volume or flow and to treat those pollutants that get carried away. And the last one is trees. Trees are easy. We know what trees are. Each tree that's over six inches in diameter at breast side, which is about four and a half feet off the ground, that is removed, has to be replaced at least two to one. And they do expect that the replacements are saplings, not cold grown trees. It's pretty hard to transplant a cold grown tree anyway. Mitigation involves just planting more native trees, but larger trees would require more replacements up to six to one. So those are the three, the three floodplain functions and the proxies that we're going to measure, measure them by. According to this model code. Okay, the next thing is this riparian buffer zone, which is a new thing for this code as well. And it's going to be different than how we normally talk about riparian buffer zone for the ordinances that we already have. They are defining it as measured from the ordinary high water line to 170 feet horizontally on each side of the stream. So here's a diagram from them about, you know, you find the ordinary high watermark, which I have a definition about what exactly that is. It is defined in the code. It has to do with a lack of terrestrial vegetation and like debris that's been washed up on the bank so that it's getting cleared out every year or so with that high watermark. And so in with within this riparian buffer zone that they want to establish, there's going to be something called the beneficial gain standard. So if you're adding a new use of the riparian buffer zone, they say it requires an even greater offset with an exception for water dependent uses like ship facilities and boat ramps that couldn't be built anywhere else and for habitat restoration. So FEMA's beneficial gain standard on top of no net loss means that an area within the same reach of the project and equivalent to 5% of the total area is planted with a native garden. They had originally said in the model code designated as open space, but they got a lot of pushback on that. So they they've said that's going to be removed in the model code, and it's removed from our ordinance as well. So this riparian buffer zone, I just want to emphasize, it does not extend outside the special flood hazard area because FEMA doesn't have any authority outside the special flood hazard. Cause FEMA doesn't have any authority outside the special flood hazard area. So wanted to make sure that that was really clear because it wasn't clear to me at first. In effect, it's, it's the special flood hazard area and it kind of groups like an inner ring and then an outer ring that they're calling the fringe. Um, so the fringe is outside of the riparian buffer zone, but it's still within special blood hazard area and the only differences. Is that they get slightly different mitigation ratios um, in, in the model ordinance, so. It's a lot of talking. And I was a theater kid too. Ooh, go away. Okay, so here's a little diagram um, that I made because I'm a visual learner, so. Um, in PowerPoint, it would have nicely done them one at a time, but it's just kind of here all as a group, so. You have your normal channel and you have the base flood elevation, I'm sorry, like it's like way up there. Um, you have the base flood elevation, which is that dotted line and that is FEMA sets that with their, with their engineers. Um, and they just tell us what that base flood elevation is and that determines where the special flood hazard area. Um, is, and you can see that by the top most vertical arrow, arrow going side to side. So then for this riparian buffer zone, we would first, we would find the ordinary high watermark and we would measure a hundred and seventy feet on either side. Now, in some cases, it's going to extend beyond. Um, the special flood hazard area, as you can see on the right, and in that case, like I said, they have no authority outside of the special flood hazard area, no mitigation would be required. And then on the left side, if you're in that fringe area where it's outside a hundred and seventy feet, but it's still in the special flood hazard area. Then you would have slightly less mitigation. And that's what the effect of the riparian buffers does. I'll leave that up for a couple of seconds. So here are these known at loss standards, um, and the mitigation. Ratios and multipliers that are in the ordinance, um, that FEMA has given us, so. You see up there at the top in the dark blue, you've got undeveloped space, impervious surfaces, and then trees are split into three different categories depending on how big they are. In the first box, the first horizontal oriented box there, um. You can see that the ratios for the, the riparian buffer zone are higher, like for undeveloped space, you would need to mitigate at a ratio of two to one. Um, which seems like a pretty tough standard to meet, and in the fringe, it's only one and a half to one. Likewise with trees, if you removed a tree that was six inches. In the right, in the riparian buffer zone in that inner ring that's a hundred and seventy feet, you would need to replace it three to one. But if you were outside in that fringe area, it would only need to be two to one. So that's the difference between the fringe and the riparian buffers. And then on top of that, you have these mitigation multipliers, so. If your mitigation happens uh, in a, it's offsite and it's at a different reach, but in the same watershed, watershed, it's two hundred percent, so you have to double. Um, whatever that number was, if you remove that one tree and you had to replace two, now you have to replace four. I can try.
I'm sorry, we're gonna, we're gonna ask her questions after the public hearing.
Okay. Scrolling on down, so uh, so maybe some unfamiliar terms in there, what is a reach, what is a fifth field watershed, so. A reach is a depth, a section of stream with similar conditions such as depth, slope and discharge, it's usually between two smaller tributaries. Um, that feed into the larger river and then change those conditions, but. Um, this is one of those things that might not have a clear and objective standard, um, for what a reaches because it, it can be defined differently. Depending on who's looking at it. Um, but a lot of the time it's between two major tributaries in the stream where the conditions are very similar. And then a fifth field watershed, um, is not defined in the code, but it is a standardized size of watershed, um, that corresponds to. Huck codes, I can't remember what that stands for, but you see it a lot in the USGS, the US Geological Service. Um, and other sort of scientific agencies where uh, first field is the entire watershed, it's millions and millions of acres. And seventh field is the most local watershed, it's only a few thousand acres. So lucky for us, uh, Jackson County GIS does have a map. Um, and talent is located just in one watershed, um, which is the case for most of the small cities, so. You're just in one watershed here in talent. Okay, so summary of the new model code. It meets the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program, uh, and incorporates those ESA performance standards. It's got three proxies for those floodplain functions and how to achieve no net loss and that's undeveloped space, pervious surfaces and trees. It has the beneficial gain standard, which is a five percent garden area of native plants, um, for most new uses. And then it has those mitigation ratios that change slightly depending on if you're inside or outside of the riparian buffer zone. Oh, and one more thing to say about mitigation ratios is there's an additional twenty five percent mitigation ratio for every year that you haven't mitigated.
That you haven't put.
That you haven't mitigated, so if you, if you said that you were going to do it and you haven't done it yet, they can tack on additional mitigation as a penalty, I guess. Um, okay, so that is the new model code, I'm going to go pretty quickly through the permit by permit approach, um, there's a lot in this. Presentation that we won't cover, um, but basically permit by permit with a habitat assessment also aims for no let, no net loss of those floodplain functions. Um, except for that they want, they would want you to review individual um, proposals and. Require them to basically investigate the habitat, um, and assess it and say what species are likely to be there. And then mitigate, so they, the habitat assessment has to be completed by and reviewed by a professional. Um, some, a biologist with some kind of credentials and experience. Um, I'm going to skip this one. Um, and the habitat assessment has to describe any impacts to habitat functions, analyze the effects. On those species and their habitats and then demonstrate that how there's going to be no net loss, this habitat functions. Um, there's a variety of formats possible, there's no standardized form. Um, not like an elevation certificate, and so the level of detail will also uh, vary with. The nature of the project, the scope and the scale, and like I said, it involves a lot of background research that must be conducted by a professional biologist. Um, and we're gonna, we're gonna skip all the steps for exactly how you con. Do you how you exactly you do one, um, but they are still subject to those no net loss standards, it's the exact same table that we saw for the model code. Um, so we, we've had some questions like what would you get a benefit by adopting the permit by permit approach? Um, and I don't really see one, it just seems like an additional. Uh, burden that would be placed on applicants and also on staff to try to understand and review these. Um, so we haven't prepared a permit by permit approach, um, in this ordinance. Scoot down here a little bit. Um, yeah, like I just said, they need research, they still have to. Mitigate for those known at loss functions and have the beneficial gain standard for most new uses, same mitigation ratios, so. There's also a kind of a legal question about this because. The permit by permit approach, I guess, was something that they originally had for Washington and they have tried to import it to this project in Oregon. Um, and not realizing that doesn't really work because how can we require a habitat assessment if it's not a requirement in our code? And there doesn't seem to be any kind of um, consensus about that yet, um, among the, the planner talk, so. Um, that's another asterisk on this whole, on this whole process. So comparison between the two and why we opted not to um, pursue this permit by permit approaches. Uh, it needs a professional research report compared to these like uh, programmatic. Performance standards that are just written into the code, um, so just. Not as good uh, guardrails for staff and more room for error. Um, and an additional burden on the applicant, so um, we went with the model code approach. Okay, new reporting requirements regardless of what we choose. Um, beginning January thirty first of next year, so coming right up. Um, we need to collect this info during the permit process and FEMA said that they'll have a reporting tool online eventually, but as of today, it's not available. So some of these things we already collect, of course, the applicant, project title, description, location. Um, now they want to see the size of the project broken out into those categories by special flood hazard area, riparian buffer zone and floodway. They want to see the amount of fill that was added and what kind of compensatory storage was created to mitigate for that developed space that we talked about. Area of clearing and grading that occurred, um, acres disconnected and reconnected to and from the floodplain. I'm not sure how we would measure that, but we'll figure it out. Um, amount of new impervious surfaces added, the type and amount of water quality mitigation. Uh, is provided for that impervious surfaces, and then lastly, trees removed and their size and how many trees were placed according to those tables. Um, okay, so. That is um, what FEMA is asking slash requiring of us. And now we're going to get into some data to talk about like what is the impact going to be on the city of talent specifically. Um, so you've got some other communities there that you can compare to if you like, but talent's there, um, in that gray box. Uh, so total number of flood, of tax lots that you have that touched the floodplain even a little, even an inch. Um, is three hundred and fifty seven, so it's, this is kind of a. A, a rough analysis that we did with GIS, obviously, we could not check every single tax lot to kind of confirm what their situation is. Um, so of those uh, tax plus that you have that are in the floodplain. The number of them that are unimproved is seventy one, so that's twenty percent of your floodplain tax slots have an improvement value of zero in the county assessor's data. So if those people wanted to uh, go ahead and make some development on their property after. We, you know, adopt these new ordinance or however we're going to do it and be subject to those new standards. Uh, they're going to find them kind of, kind of difficult to deal with maybe. So next group I want to look at is um, these floodplain tax slots. And uh, kind of what's the split between them, so I use five thousand square, five thousand square feet. As a benchmark, um, because that's enough area to typically build a normal, single, you know, not too huge uh, home for yourself. So same number at the top there, total number of flex, tax lots that are in the floodplain is three hundred and fifty seven, and of those. You've got a hundred and sixty six that have five thousand square feet or less, that's outside the square, uh, the special flood hazard area, so the dry area. Um, so that's forty six percent of your, of your floodplain tax slots. Do not have very much land outside the special flood hazard area and they would have it a difficult time building anything. Uh, they would go into the floodplain and they would be forced to mitigate. And then on the flip side, tax lots that have more than five thousand square feet, that is a hundred and ninety one, so that's fifty four percent of your floodplain tax slots. And then putting it together, let's look at tax lots that are both unimproved and have five thousand uh, square feet or less of dry area. And for talent, that's fifty three tax slots, so that's fifteen percent of all of your floodplain tax slots. Uh, are currently unimproved and don't have very much dry area available to them. Um, so these are be, going to be the ones that find it the most difficult, um, to meet these new requirements and find it the most onerous. I don't have my addendum with me, um, I did pull up. Uh, the number of active floodplain policies in the city of talents. And I can't remember exactly what the number was now, but it was more than two hundred, it was quite, uh, quite a lot and it was more than ten million dollars in coverage. Um, for all of those people who are participating in the National Flood Insurance Program. So obviously, this is not an apples to apples comparison. But in this decision, you do kind of have to weigh these people who may want to develop versus these people who could lose their flood insurance. Um, and possibly lose their home if talent uh, is not compliant with the national flood. So you have a really um, hard decision in front of you, uh, and, and FEMA has put us in a kind of difficult, pretty difficult position. Um, but I will leave that to your discretion and deliberations, uh, it's a little bit out of my lane. Oh, and then last thing is that in my staff report at the very end, there's a document that's called links, contacts and acronyms. Um, that's where all of this information from this presentation came from. It's got links, so you can view the whole model ordinance, you can view FEMA's uh, draft implementation plan if you'd like to read hundreds of pages. Um, and there's also some links to some other resources that can help us like how to measure the ordinary high water line. What is low impact development and also um, how to find your own property and see if it's in the floodplain. So that is the end of the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you. Good job. I thought I had a lot to read, now I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay, so uh. Okay, so that was the staff report and the uh, criteria. And evidence and testimony in this hearing must be directed toward these criteria or other criteria in the city's zoning code comprehensive plan, plan. Subdivision code or other applicable land use and development related regulations that the person believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient clarity and detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity. To respond accordingly to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on the issue. Before the end of the hearing, any participant may request a continuance. In addition, whether or not there is a continuance, a participant. May request that the record of the proceedings remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. The planning commission will consider whether or not they will continue the hearing or leave the record open for a specified length of time for new written testimony or evidence. When called to speak, please come to the microphone, sign in, state your name and your residential address for the public record. Please keep your comments to the applicable criteria as identified by the city staff. When you're called to speak, please come to the microphone. I just read that anyway, okay, so the applicant, which is us, just that what you were supposed to do that in fifteen minutes. Talk faster next time. Individual, individuals, five minutes, an individual representing a group, ten minutes, and. If there's rebuttal, or in this case, we'll just say answers to questions, ten minutes for the applicant. I guess we're the applicant.
We are the.
After listening to the testimony, considering the evidence of the planning commission. The planning commission may vote to recommend approval, approval with conditions or denial of the application unless the matter is continued or tabled to another date specific meeting. If you have any questions or do not understand the procedure, please raise your hand and ask them now. Click your question. Oh, no, this is, I, that was just if you had a question about the procedure, if you ha- if you have a question. About that kind of question, I'm, I'm opening the public hearing right now. And uh. And first, do, do we have anybody, has anybody filled out a speaker form?
We got a comment on the public testimony email, uh, this is from a Mr. Stan, um, located. Located at Rio Four, Willow Street Drive. Um, and he just said, I am writing this email to you because we received a letter of mail recently that stated the project. Uh, for protecting invading, invading species in the greenway floodplain could affect the value of my property among other things. Um, is there, um, Mr. Stan is here in presence in the audience or on Zoom?
Okay, so uh, do we have any speaker request forms? Okay, so if you, if you want to speak to us about this or uh. Ask questions, uh, is there a mic here? We need a mic.
We can use one of these.
Okay, we need to, for you to speak into a microphone and, and say your name and. Your uh, city of residence. For the record, because we usually have forms to fill out, but. We'll just do that. But make sure you say your name clearly and. What is it?
We're the owners of Mountain States.
Oh.
And I've got a question on, we're redeveloping, we got, of course, you know, burned out by the fire. Top, is this going to affect us anyway?
FEMA has said that it uh. It would affect you, it's going to affect all redevelopment, including substantial improvements. They don't see a difference and they would require mitigation.
Just drop the um.
Okay. Okay.
I understand.
Okay. Would you?
And have this back.
My name is Eric.
Can you put this mic so we can hear you? The mic working?
I represent West Valley View LLC.
West Valley View LLC owns map thirty eight, one west, twenty three D tax lots nineteen hundred, nineteen oh three and nineteen oh four. Talent Two LLC owns map thirty eight, one west, twenty three D tax lots twelve hundred, twelve oh three, twelve oh four, twelve oh five and twelve oh six. The current riparian buffer zone is fifty feet from the top of bank. An additional one hundred and twenty feet of buffering greatly restricts the development potential on almost any lot that abuts Wagner Creek. Or the or adjacent to Bear Creek. Whether or not they have significant area in the flood zone. And it's unclear to me. Either from the FEMA. Documents that I read or the local documents I read, how? The riparian zone is going to be dealt with in terms of development now that it's. Like three times larger. So that is one thing I think needs to be answered tonight or at some point clearly. The proposal is about to adopt a one size fits all. In other words. Proposal two, which went into depth. Doesn't make sense for several reasons to us. First, the current fifty foot buffer from top of bank is based on the safe harbor language of gold five. Which governs natural resources, scenic and historic areas and of open spaces in the Oregon planning code. There's no mention of gold five in any of these documents. The safe harbor provision was designed to provide for alternative methods of review based on individual circumstances. Second, there is no need to rush into this code revision at this time. At this stage, FEMA is still in the quote unquote pre-implementation compliance review. FEMA does not intend to fully implement their formal plan until twenty twenty seven. So there's still several years remaining if you want to update the entire ordinance. Finally, other local communities, including Ashland. Have made the decision to select a case by case habitat assessment. To comply with the current FEMA requirements. This makes much more sense because each individual property, particularly in our area. Can have dramatically different features that make a one size fit all approach. To the riparian buffer zone unnecessarily in our. It is also hard for me to understand how this approach could not be viewed by some as a property. When the individual features of a particular property are not considered in a blanket restriction. It could result in properties that have limited or no impact from nearby strain deemed unbillable by a one size fit all ordinance. So I would assure and urge you to take a more measured response to this issue at this time. And opt for a case by case review until the FEMA final plan comes into view in twenty twenty seven. We strongly object to the current ordinance as proposed. Also, for your reference, the link in the staff report that references the floodplain document is not working. Proof of that. Links to a page that says page not found. Okay, thank you very much.
Could we get a copy of your remarks? Have you just sent them already?
That I get a copy.
Could we could we have put me to red or? For the record or?
Yeah, sure. I don't have another copy. It's your welcome. I don't need to put a copy down.
We should name on it.
Madam Chair, I just might suggest that we put an email on the site of the list or something. If we've got a blank piece of paper, just so. Something comes up on this issue in the future, we can notify people. Does anybody have a blank sheet of paper? I'll start that. Can I have a blank? Thanks. Welcome to sign up if you'd like.
Hi, I'm Jerry House. I live at one forty Old Valley Drive and Oak Valley is this complex. I'm here speaking not on ourselves, but for one hundred, one ten, one twenty, one thirty and one forty Old Valley. In order for us to rebuild, we had, we were deciding for it to be approved, we had to put a forceful retaining wall behind our property with off of Agner Creek. And. Up the build up to the floodplain, my floodplain level from the street level was right here. So we had to refill to that point. Now, look, the houses that are existing have been approved. They just affect them in any way. No, okay. What about the resale then?
I don't know if I could answer that with any authority.
Okay, now there's two lots that are still open. But they could, we have it till like September, you know, we have another zoning deal. I'll be back to you later, but. So right now, they don't want to affect the three existing homes that are available. And then the two empty lots when they're built, they should be okay with the food law. Next I had a question from one of the contractors on.
In FEMA's model ordinance that we based ours off of, I don't think so.
Okay, I just want to thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody else who'd like to ask questions or speak? You just about delete. Disappeared our property. Going from fifty to the one.
You need to go up and.
Tell us, tell us your name.
Karen Schrader. We have property at two thirty three Talent Avenue. The fifty, it's just a small lot. From Talent Avenue back to why I meant. But at fifty, we could still put property in front of it. Build something. We had a duplex, but it went with the Almeida fight. Now, when you bring it to a hundred and seventy five. We have enough maybe for a five. So. I'm not happy.
Thank you.
The list is up here on the table. If anyone wants to sign up and put your email and mail address.
The list is so when something comes up the next meeting, you'll be notified. If we put your email on the.
I am with you.
No.
RSS, need now.
That's all? So. If you ask, if we have a time that you want to address. Any other questions, could you address any questions?
Just one thing to clarify about the riparian zone. So. They're using the same words, but they don't mean the same. Like the same riparian zone that talent has an ordinance about, which I think you said is fifty feet and probably you guys don't touch the Rogue River. Okay. So the FEMA riparian buffer zone. Doesn't extend outside the special flood hazard area. And in a lot of cases, your special flood hazard area is quite narrow because we have a lot of steep slopes around here. So the rules that you have about riparian, your riparian zone, which I imagine is like not removing vegetation, or if you do, you put it back. Wouldn't apply to this a hundred and seventy feet. If that, does that make sense?
Yeah, because it only applies to the areas. That are within a hundred and seventy feet and in the floodplain as well. So if you're. For example, if your property, if you have an area that's in within the hundred and seventy feet, but it's high enough to where it's outside and elevated above. The special flood hazard area, that section of your property would not, this would not apply to that specifically. Because FEMA does not have jurisdiction over anything outside of the special flood hazard area. So hopefully that makes a little bit of sense.
You can ask.
Well, that makes sense, but the fact that you're redefining the riparian zone to be three times bigger than it is now. What restrictions are going to apply? Not FEMA restrictions. But what restrictions in talent are going to apply to those areas?
None of none of FEMA's. Sorry, none of Talents' riparian rules would apply to that one hundred and seventy foot zone. In fact, maybe we should call it something else so that it's like clearly different.
It is. And then it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect those areas. So if you're outside of the floodplain and within a hundred and seventy feet. There wouldn't be extra code standards. It would have to be part of the TNC. It would only be the areas that are affected if they are not well managed specifically. I'd like that reflected in the minutes.
Well, it was in the report and she she made a picture.
Well, she was very thorough and her report was great, but distinction of what happens. In this riparian flood zone area. Was not. What you can do or what you. FEMA was not going to have jurisdiction over that. But how now you're saying that we're not even talking about apples and apples. We're talking about Stan Allen still having its own riparian buffer zone, which is fifty feet from the top of the bank. And yet FEMA has this other riparian zone, which is a hundred and seventy feet from the high water. And what you're saying now, if I understand correctly, is that. The old. Talent. It is the same talent riparian buffer zone. Definition of what can be done in those areas if they're outside of the floodplain is not changed.
Right, the talent one is its own thing and the FEMA one is its own thing, even though one's a riparian zone and the other is the riparian buffer zone. I know that's not helpful.
And if we if we elected to. Acknowledge and then approve the code of amendments, that code amendment only requires chapter fifteen, which is floodplain specific.
Thank you. If they come or I'm going to close the public hearing. And open it up for questions for staff. Would you like to start, Commissioner?
I don't have any right now.
Yeah. So I mean, if you're dealing with a property that it's presently. Completely undeveloped. And to maintain no net loss means you're doing offsite mitigation somewhere.
Or onsite if you can.
But if you have a thing with nothing. You're going to build anything. You're going to have less impervious surface, less undeveloped area.
The undeveloped area would be the hardest one to meet, but for the water, for the impervious surfaces and water quality, you can do something like low impact. Green infrastructure or professional stormwater detention.
And what so what what options for offsite mitigation? Would be available in these situations like. Because as you see, you said something about the distance from. The subject property, the further you go, the less relevant the mitigation is to the impacts at that site, right? So.
Right, they want to see it within the same reach, which we had that map up from Jackson County GIS, which is some miles around talent, but you know, it's not, it's not that far.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the idea of the it's pretty simplified to. Have these three proxies for floodplain functions and limiting, limiting riparian or yeah, riparian vegetation to trees over six inches is. You know, you could leave all the trees that are over six inches and clear everything else and you're not going to have the same riparian vegetation functions. So I can't give them a lot of credit for that. As a proxy. And how much of a, how much of a burden is this, these reporting requirements from FEMA like? Is that is that an onerous? Burden for staff to be trying to meet meeting those. Those requirements or?
Well, I think hopefully we would have a, we would have a form that they fill out. Kind of like they do when they they do a pre-construction elevation certificate and then the final elevation certificate where. You know, they they say what they were going to do and then they. Report at the end and say, did they, you know, meet what they were trying to meet? So hopefully we could make that easy and just have a form that we can upload right to FEMA. But yeah, that's an unknown question right now.
Yeah, and yeah, just one more comment. You know, cutting down a six inch tree and planting two saplings and calling it good isn't. Quite good. And the chances of either of those two. Little saplings making it to maturity without considerable care and attention is. You know. Fifty fifty at best, so. Anyway.
Minister, we think it would be a good idea for the to be come for. Of the regulations from Urban Board Street about that.
Um, I they they would be free to request that. And if they request it, then I'm sure the committee would be happy to, you know, give their assessment.
By tomorrow night?
No, by tomorrow night. No, that's right. That's right. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm wondering. Well, let me. Follow up on his comment on the mitigation. And actually, Mr. Archer's comments as well. So they FEMA's got their own tree mitigation standards there, but that doesn't. That wouldn't supersede the. City's own tree mitigation standards.
No, I think they would coexist.
Right, okay. Just wanted to be clear on that just because we were having a discussion on the riparian. And then can you bring up the standard, the staff, the reporting requirements? Again, that staff or that FEMA has.
Sure.
Mandated, I guess. So. I guess my question, follow up question on this is that. So the applicant's going to provide all this information? And I mean, the idea is that there's no. Ground truthing of this. It's just. Applicant fills this out and self reports.
I mean, we haven't worked all the at all the K S A, but that's where we're starting from, I think.
Okay. That makes me really uncomfortable. For obvious reasons, I mean, just errors is one. And then. Has the state, I didn't see Kotex's letter. Letter on the difficulty of implementing the pickums, but. Has the state, the state hasn't sued FEMA for this?
No, not yet. I don't think. I know that they were sued some years ago, but that lawsuit was dismissed because FEMA hadn't actually taken action yet. So there wasn't any harm to have standing on. But yeah, a lot of people are watching this pretty closely and ready to push back, but it hasn't happened yet. It's. Right.
What was that comment?
By people change jurisdictions.
Oh, I see what you're saying. And then I wanted to follow up with the comment you made about DLCV being hands off. And what arena have they been hands off then?
They have, they haven't reviewed the model ordinance to say that it only has clear and objective standards. Which is kind of a big deal. And they don't have a lot of staff members, but they haven't been able to offer a lot of technical assistance about this. And normally for such a big code update that was mandated from higher above, you know, we would want that. And that, yeah.
And then FEMA doesn't make room for us to implement our own pickup, obviously. It's they're giving us these three choices. You can't write your own pickup.
You could write more restrictive requirements.
Yeah, well, judge that. Yeah, right. Okay. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's it's pathetic the way they've handled this. I mean, you can just look at the dates of the legal stuff and then tell that that they haven't taken care of their business, so. No more questions at this time. Sorry.
I don't have anything other than I am concerned there aren't clear and objective standards for trying to develop this and. The offsite mitigation of two hundred percent. On undeveloped property seems. Even more burdensome, burdensome than is appropriate. And that's from somebody who really loves to fish. So.
Here Riley, I have a follow up. Or a clarification. So if. So they're asking us to adopt this new language or whatever you want to call it. By December first. And if we don't, tell me again, what happens if we don't?
They haven't been super clear on exactly what consequences will happen and when, but they have said that compliance. You know, your participation in the National Flood Insurance Program would be jeopardized. The workshop that I was at, the FEMA rep said that several cities are just ghosting them on this matter. And for those cities, they're going to be reaching out more urgently and then probably scheduling a community visit. And then if they still don't want to comply, then their participation in the National Flood Insurance Program could be canceled. And on top of that, there's also. Disaster eligibility aid that could be in jeopardy. And I have had a hard time finding exactly what programs would apply. If that applies to every program or only flood related programs, that's been hard information to find, but it's a. I don't want to say a threat. It feels like one.
So the National Flood Insurance Program. So the National Flood Insurance Program. If they were to cancel that, then the individuals who are in the floodplains, we have to find their own insurance. Right, add their own, I'm I'm sure they paid for it now, but it's probably more affordable.
As I understand it, if you if you have a mortgage in the floodplain, you're required to have flood insurance. And most people have national flood insurance because it's cheaper than than private flood insurance. So if your flood insurance was canceled. You would get a mortgage lender saying you have thirty days to find private insurance that meets these minimum requirements, or your mortgage will be due in full.
Actually is able, but if they're required, you should, they can't automatically do.
Okay. So. Okay, this is fifty year and one hundred year floodplain to say.
For fifty year floodplain? No, just one hundred year. There is a five hundred year floodplain, but that doesn't have any regulatory attachments to it. Some people like to buy additional flood insurance, but there's no federal requirement. I don't think we we don't. We don't measure the fifty year, we measure the five hundred year.
And when I talk about previous service. Does any of this have to do with with the type of soil? I mean, that's some. Clay is much harder than other clays and is. It's just about if it's soil or not.
Right, I think it would only apply to manmade development, not any natural clay that's in the soil. Maybe if you wanted to import clay. To make yourself an impervious driveway, then they maybe that would apply.
So. But but I heard I and. Add on if you want to, but what I heard was that our concerns are about. D L C D being silent on something that is reversible or somebody takes it to loop, but it's not clear and objective after we've done all this. And. And we're and I really the the idea of calling the FEMA regulated area is something else. Like the FEMA regulated area. And it's that so it's different for our. But yeah, and that that and. And I I would be interested with him getting the eyes of the urban forestry. Coming to deal with this and we're concerned about the recording requirements on offsite mitigation. I think that's a flittered concern.
Can I add one more thing? At the workshop I was at, FEMA has also said that, you know, they've gotten a lot of pushback on this model ordinance and how it does not align very well with Oregon land use laws. And that they're going to be making changes to it and then releasing them, but they haven't given any kind of date on that, and they didn't move the December first deadline. So we put together what we had the best that we could, but. Changes are still coming and then those long term changes are coming three years down the line or later.
So so the the motion will be. Do we recommend going with the for the last minute? Or do we recommend going with what they handed this cert bar without our concerns attached? Or just say no? But so so the concerns and those are our choices and then someone would like to remove something. But if it was straightforward with the.
The word we're the motion would be to a recommendation to the council, right?
And we say.
Was a page here that had all of the motions on it.
The Eleanor Pnomaroff. Two seven two Rockville Place in Talent. Um, so my question has to do with, let's say. I am somebody who lives in the floodplain and I do have national flood insurance on my mortgage. Is my flood insurance in would be in jeopardy if the city doesn't do anything?
Right, that's true.
Okay, but if the city does adopt the ordinance that you've been presenting. Do I have to do anything to my existing property to mitigate anything or I am I just good?
Your property is already developed and everything, you don't have to do any changes to your existing development.
Okay, so because in planning, it's just kind of strange because usually it's only if someone's going to make a change, somebody's affected. But here, everybody who has flood insurance, national flood insurance is potentially affected. If the city doesn't take an action to comply with FEMA. Okay, thanks.
Can I answer a question too? Hey. Rowan, I've got a question on on G on structures located in multiple or partial flood zones. The new the new language, I'm sorry, we give a number. That's one eighty under general standards.
Let me, can you give me a page number?
Twenty two.
Twenty two, that's very close. Okay.
So the the red line, the new proposed new language is. Structures located in multiple or partial flood zones. In coordination with the State of Oregon Specialty Codes. One, when a structure is located in multiple flood zones of the community's flood insurance rate maps firm. The provisions for the more restrictive flood zone shall apply. And then two, it's saying when a structure is partially located in a special flood hazard area. Which that's the area that we're talking about, right?
The one hundred year, yeah.
Yeah, the entire structure shall meet the requirements for new construction and substantial improvements.
Right.
So the first one is limiting, it's just saying the more restrictive flood zone shall apply. So it's like what you go with the city or you go with whatever penis.
No, I think it's that if you build your house and half is in the one hundred year floodplain and half is out, you have to treat the entire house like it's in the hundred year.
Okay, all right, yeah, okay. Thank you.
That's a dumb question. I have a question. Thank you. When does the one hundred year start?
When does it start?
Yeah, like what did it start at nineteen hundred to two thousand or nineteen?
They've changed it to to be.
Right. Right, so over a hundred years, you would expect on average there to be one base flood event, but you could have more, you could have less.
Per year.
Right.
And I I have another concern that I would like to share and. But I I feel like. There should be a difference between rebuilding and developing because. I mean, our policy is the city, we feel like whatever you have, we have that. And so I feel like that. Policy shouldn't.
How many houses, doing how many houses are covered in talent by the national?
I had it on an addendum that we forgot to bring. I think it's more than three hundred.
Oh, yeah, that's what you had, you have three seven.
Three hundred fifty seven homes now currently have. National insurance, okay.
My friend's property, I own property on South Pacific Highway two, but it doesn't affect. But and I used to own the Goodnight Inn motel and it burned out, so I kind of have a bad taste about FEMA to begin with. They got two hundred fifty thousand dollars to clean our lot off, which was more money than I got. You know what I mean? So. It's like the eight hundred pound wheel of pushing this little town around. And this is what I see going on. Is the panel here is, I think, really trying to do the best interest of public. And there probably is some things that need to be done. But we also have a French work of gas, this town was almost wiped out. This guy is probably the biggest one I could see affected here. I mean, that's insane what happens, so.
This is fun, but you you have to stick to the criteria.
Well, the criteria is that we need to ask the state of Oregon to go against FEMA and say, we need a moratorium on your forceful act of putting the timeline. Let's back it off, as he said. Let's back it off.
I I encourage you to to. There'll be a public hearing before the city council, they make the final decision, we are recommending the body. And and I I recommend that you share that with them.
Can you introduce yourself for the record?
Peter Walson. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
You had a question earlier.
I decided it's not.
It wasn't a long time ago.
I was just. To this. Buffer. The riparian zone and the my experience with FEMA is that the floodway is already pretty well defined by them. And I didn't see how they could be related in the same. As the same thing, but I don't think that really matters what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I don't think the floodway is changing. And you mostly can't build in the floodway anyway.
That's the only time I saw it.
So is it your language or?
Uh, no, this is from FEMA.
Would anyone like to move something forward?
I wouldn't.
You would not?
No. I'm going to continue to bruise the the language and look for clear, anything that's not clear and objective.
I'm just gonna, it's very difficult, especially with the threat of people losing their insurance. So I'm I I'm not really too sure how really to proceed, so I'm still trying to consider how that. Where to go with that.
You could recommend that. We. You could recommend that we. Don't approve because of these concerns, or you could recommend approval, but we would like these concerns addressed. And. And yeah, one of the other choices.
Yeah, I have I have all the motions here, so I'm trying to see which one.
I wanted to ask our city attorney that if we were to continue this item to a future date and time. Would that? Put. Would that take people's insurance and the risk of losing their insurance out of play? Does that make sense if?
Well, Rowan can probably answer that better than I can, but my perception is. If we don't act, we don't know what FEMA will do, but there is, they have the. Opportunity to cancel the flood insurance if we don't act. So the people that Rowan said are ghosting FEMA, they're taking that risk. We could take that risk too, but that's a pretty big risk.
But by continuing this discussion for to a further late date in time, we're not. Creating a safe haven essentially.
No, that's quite the opposite.
But yeah, we need want this to. Want this to go forward because because it needs to get to the distinction.
Okay.
And we, the way they get it. I don't care, you know, it doesn't matter, just so as long as our concerns. And recommendations that they're with it, so you can you could move a recommendation for approval or not. But I would love that our concerns.
So we. Could move to. To approve. Based on our concerns.
And concerns that we're gonna lose.
Well, there if there's a there's a recommendation to recommend to adopt it with the following conditions.
Okay.
And those conditions would be that our concerns be addressed.
Right.
Have the.
I know, that's what I'm reading. So what page are you on? I'm on page.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Team, okay, if that's what Jason said. Team, actually, it doesn't have a page. Yeah, it's page fifteen, sorry. And it's, I'm looking at.
Oh.
Motion C.
Okay.
So I could just make it and then we can all discuss it. So I move to recommend the city council adopt ordinance twenty four nine eight six zero for the talent municipal code title fifteen. Buildings and construction, chapter fifteen point fifteen, blood damage prevention with the following conditions. And this is why I need some help, that on the condition that our concerns are addressed. And you have a list of those concerns.
And and that's. Getting information from D L C D about clear and objective and renaming the FEMA regulated area. Asking for a recommendation from urban forestry. We were concerned about reporting retirements offsite mitigation and the difference between rebuild and and develop. Because these where we're rebuilding after the fire, we feel like. Should we allow?
I second that motion.
New discussion?
With the recommended.
Yeah.
Condition.
Yeah, I'm gonna vote for this motion, recognizing that. That our items are recommendations, I don't actually think. You'll gain much, no offense to urban forestry, I just don't think, you've got a couple. Members or a member and a former member here, but I'm still going to vote for it anyway, so that's just what I wanted to say.
Anyone else this session?
Yeah, I'm gonna reluctantly vote for it. One of the more. Half baked things. That that might ever vote for. But right, but but you know, they they do have. The control over the flood insurance program, which a lot of people rely on. And part of what's frustrating about this is that it's temporary and we don't know what the final. Rule is going to be because it hasn't, you know, worked its way through the NEPA process and then that's going to take a while and. Should have shouldn't have taken this long, so you know, many, many levels of frustration about. About this, but. Yeah, under the circumstances, it's gonna offer a reluctant yes vote.
It's a, what we're doing, what we do is best for the people who are infected.
Yeah.
Chair Riley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shapiro.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes.
Yes.
Commissioner DeMola.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon.
Yes.
We're gonna take just a couple minutes break for people that would like to know now.
Darby.
So how have the others ghosted? So how the other cities ghosted you?
Yeah. Cut down six into three and put a couple of saplings in the ground, you're good.
There's a bathroom that went the whole way back there. Almost out of there.